Welcome to the October 7th meeting of the City Council. The board is calling a meeting to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Chen.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Potem Man.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here. We move to item three, the invocation. We have Jerry Dambazian, owner of Wonder Cleaners and Draperies located at 9136 Las Tunas Drive, and he will be providing the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Would everybody please stand? Thank you. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to ask for your wisdom and guidance for the council meetings set before us tonight. I pray that you would impart your wisdom and patience upon each council member on the dais for the agenda set before them. Your word instructs us to pray for those in authority over us. We pray for our country, our state, and federal officials, that they would make decisions that would benefit all citizens. We are reminded that all the good things for us always happen at the local level, which is tonight. Lord, I think I know all of our city council members and support staff. I would think that their number one priority is public safety, and we see that every day displayed through our sheriff's dedicated team, our firefighters, and our public safety team, including CERT members. We agree that we live in a troubled world, but in spite of that, Lord, we have much to thank you for tonight as we celebrate the arrival of our Australian students visiting our city and as they travel back to Australia next Thursday. We pray that they would carry back many memories of their time here. And we also think of the talented artists that beautified our utility boxes and just saying no to drugs with Red Ribbon Week. We ask this all in your name and for your good and art glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jerry. May I please have a member of the Young Marines lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Do it, stand, please.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's give them a hand. Okay, we move to item five, ceremonial matters presentations, and we are going to have the introduction of our Australian Sister City Exchange students. So Matt, would you like to come up and...
My name is Matt Byers, and you've seen me in many capacities in town. Tonight, I, along with several of our other committee members, represent Temple City Sister Cities Association, which my daughter was a proud ambassador certain number of years ago. And as many of you know, I taught at Temple City, in Temple City schools, for about forty years. And one of the great desires and privileges was being able to take specifically Brighter Side Singers and a number of students abroad representing Temple City. The Sister City organization, sending ambassadors from Temple City to our sister city in the Hocksbury, and then them reciprocating by sending ambassadors to Temple City to learn about our community and our culture, is one of the greatest things I can think of as an educator that makes our world a little better, by having young people come in and experience the differences and realizing the world is a little smaller, but we all have the same goals and dreams. And then as they become their citizens in their communities, they make their communities better, and hopefully because of the influences, some of the influences that they've realized here. Tonight, I'm going to invite our Australian ambassadors to come up, introduce themselves and their host families, share a little bit about their experiences. And all I can say is these are amazing individuals that have represented their communities to the utmost, and we are so proud, and I know we're going to miss them when they leave in about a week or so. So kids, come on up and share your names and your host families and a little bit of your experiences.
My name is Simeon. I'm staying with the Guo family. One of my favorite experiences so far is we actually got to go to a live viewing of The Price is Right, and we got taken to a backstage tour as well. So that was a really, really great experience since I've been here.
Hi, I'm Shelby, and I'm staying with the Wong's. And I think one of my favorite experiences so far was we got to do a beach day with all the Americans and Australians, and a lot of our host families showed up. And I think that was really fun because it showed, one, us American beaches and how different they are to Australian ones, which isn't too different, and also it just was a great bonding day for everyone who was involved.
Hi, everyone. I'm Abby, and I am staying with the Castros, who have been lovely to be hosted by. And my favorite thing would obviously have to be the amazing food here, which is amazing. And I just love getting to know everyone, especially at school.
Hi, everyone. My name is Macy. I'm staying with the Madre Gales, which have been the best, best, best thing ever. And my favorite thing so far was they surprised me with a trip to Disneyland yesterday, so that was one of the best things, like literally the best days of my life.
Hi, everyone. My name's Isabel Trent. I'm staying with the Garcia's. They've been so amazing, and it's been like the best time. So far, one of my favorite things during this trip has been the trip to Universal Studios, which was like a really fun day, and I've never been, so it was really cool.
So on behalf of our student ambassadors and the Sister City organization, we deeply want to thank you deeply from the bottom of our hearts for supporting this program, for encouraging our Temple City kids, and this wonderful exchange that has blessed so many people over the years, since, really since 2000. Special shout out to Tom Chavez, you know, our city representative on our committee. Without the support of the city and you folks, it just wouldn't have really happened. So thank you so much for all that you do in supporting this. And at this point, I think, if you have any questions for our visitors?
I just wanted to ask all the host families to stand up so we can see them. Thank you so much. Okay, if they could stay up there, we have some...
Souvenirs.
Souvenirs. Okay. We gave you certificates. No? Okay.
Okay. Council, you want to help pick them? And then we'll take a picture.
Thank you so much.
Hold them up, same as... Here, perfect. Mayor, since the host families are so integral in this, can we ask them to come up?
Of course.
Come on up.
No.
No.
You're okay.
You're okay.
Okay.
Get to your buddy's face. That's good, perfect. Are you hiding in the back?
Yes. (Laughter). Perfect. Thank you. (Applause).
Okay. Again, thank you to the host families and to the students, and enjoy your last full week here.
So can I share a few embarrassing words?
Sure. As long as they're about you.
Yeah. So yesterday, I had the privilege of hosting or chaperoning this great group of students. Picked them up at the high school around 12:30, I believe, and had them for the afternoon. And I was trying to figure out, well, where could we go that would be kind of neat in the area for lunch? And I was thinking maybe the boat or something, you know, something, or we were going to go to Old Town Pasadena, a lot of good restaurants. So I said, "Where would you guys like to go?" IHOP? The last place I would think of, right? Everybody's like, "IHOP." But they, it was good, right? Guys, wasn't it a good lunch? Very good. A lot of pancakes on that table, I'll tell you that. Spent the day going shopping in Old Town a little bit. That was interesting. And then ended up at Handel's Ice Cream for dessert. And then we went on a roller coaster ride through Sierra Madre. I had one of the city vehicles, and all of us were in there. We fit very nicely. But I don't know if you guys are familiar with, some of the Sierra Madre streets have a lot of speed bumps. And I didn't realize it was going to be every ten feet. So we went over a couple of them, and I just kind of lost track and missed one of them. And I think we all hit our heads on the top of the car. So that was, that was probably the most fun thing we had all afternoon, probably, right? So anyway, thank you, guys, for putting up with me in the afternoon, and it was a lot of fun. And we look forward to the going away dinner, which is coming up soon, I believe. It's hard to believe, it's been, what, three weeks already or four? Yeah. So anyway, but good group, good group. And I know, I know we probably always say that, but we really do mean it. And I can tell you that being involved with this program for so long, we've seen all kinds of groups come and go. But you guys are pretty special, and, you know, all of us wish you the best of luck, and I'm sure you're going to take back a lot of memories. So thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item 5B, Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Red Ribbon Week, observed annually from October 23rd through October 31st, promotes drug prevention, education, and a drug-free lifestyle among youth and communities. In honor of the memory of DEA agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, this observation serves to unite individuals, schools, organizations, and communities in a shared commitment to healthy, drug-free living through participation in prevention, activities, themed events, and outreach efforts that strengthen our collective resolve to stand against substance abuse. I would like to invite the Southland Young Marines Private First Class Maxwell Hadad, Lance Corporal Harley Herrera, Private Ethan Dillon, and Private First Class Leonard Soto to come up to receive the proclamation. (Applause). And council, will you join me in a picture?
Sure.
(Inaudible). Wait. Yeah. In the restroom?
Yeah.
We'll look at him when he comes in. Tell him to wash his hands. Yeah. Take one out. All right. Sounds good. You guys all happy? Smiling? Are you smiling? They're Marines, they can smile. (Laughter). Do we have the instructor, maybe, come on? You sure?
It's about the kids.
It's about the kids.
It's about the kids.
Surge, do you want to be in the picture?
No. Okay. Come on this end. Okay. Smiling. Perfect. Thank you. Good job, guys. (Applause).
Okay, we move to item 5C, recognition of utility box beautification artists. And Scott, I just have to say, it's a little tour in itself to go around. I hope that our schools take advantage and take the kids on a walking tour of all of them. But please, go ahead.
Sure. You're going to get your exercise in tonight, council. You've got one more opportunity to get up and stretch your feet or your legs. Good evening, Mayor. Honorable councilmembers and members of the community that are here tonight. It's truly a privilege to recognize these talented artists who have transformed our streets into a gallery of public art through the Art on Boxes campaign. This remarkable project is here today because of your foresight, your leadership, and your commitment, city council members. When you approved the Las Tunas Streetscape project, you made a bold choice, not just to invest in infrastructure improvements like landscaping, benches, and LED lighting, but to elevate the cultural life of our community. By dedicating public resources to public art, you've ensured that our downtown would not only function better, but would stand as a welcoming, vibrant, and distinctly Temple City space. So I think the first round of applause tonight belongs to our city council for taking such good leaders.[918.26][918.26](Applause). Through this vision, 26 utility boxes along and around Las Tunas Drive have been transformed into canvases. Each one reflects a piece of our identity, whether it's a camilla or a parrot or the camilla festival, the red car, the astronaut Steve Lindsay, or other stories that capture the spirit of Temple City. This vision came to life because of our partnership with 1111 Projects, a nonprofit with deep experience in public art all across Southern California. They reviewed more than 150 artist submissions, coordinated the installation, and built in a youth mentorship program that paired local students with professional artists, ensuring this project was not only about beautifying boxes, but also about inspiring the next generation. We extend our special thanks to Executive Director Aaron Stone and Programs Officer Megan Pinkston and the entire 1111 team for the passion and professionalism they poured into this effort. Their work, guided by the direction and support of the city council, has created something lasting, a streetscape that radiates creativity, community pride, and Temple City's unique identity. And now, the reason why we're here tonight, the artists. Of course, none of this would be possible without the artists themselves. Their creativity and dedication turned ordinary gray boxes into extraordinary landmarks of beauty. Each design adds depth, color, and story to our city's streetscape, reminding us daily of the power of art to connect us to place and to each other. And now, we want to spend some time recognizing each of the artists that have come tonight, and we will show them a picture of the work that they've done, and then the mayor will provide, or the council will provide some certificates. So now, the mayor would like to each thank each artist individually. As your name's called, please come forward, receive your certificate, and shake the hands with the council members, and then pose for a picture. And then, once you have your certificate, if you could stay up here and stay in front of the dais, then we'll take a group picture at the end. So with that, we'll start off with our first artist.
What are we doing? Cindy, you can move it up there for this? You want to hook it?
Is this Faye?
Faye. Faye Feliciano, in recognition of your creativity and contribution to the beautification of our community through your artwork on the utility box in our city. Your unique vision and talent have transformed the box into a vibrant expression of art, culture, and community pride. Thank you for helping turn our streets into galleries and for inspiring all who pass by. And this is true of all the artists, but I'm only going to read that one. Faye?
(Applause).
Are we, we'll take a group picture, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, we can do a group. It's up to you. Okay, group.
Vivian Rodriguez. Vivian? And Sophia Guo, is it Guo? Guo? And she is the student mentee, so she worked with the artist. Pretty cool, right? Megan Tran. LaShawn Ito. Is it LaShawn or LaShawn? Jessica Guo, student mentee. Jason Chang. The artist Omar Mejia. Sarah Evans. Lauren Velve. Lauren, is it Velve?
Valve.
Valve. Thank you. Pablo Azar. Annabelle Wayland. Stephanie Valdevia. 1111 Projects. Megan Pinkston. And Megan is the 1111 Projects Programs Officer. You do it all. Aaron Stone.
Oh, that's also a lovely person.
Jason Chang. Well, that's, he's two. Let's give them a big hand. You know, I won't say where I started looking at them, but I thought the first one was my favorite, and then I got to the second one, and I thought, well, no, that's my favorite. And then, when I got to the end, I realized that they're all my favorites. So congratulations.
(Applause).
You're now part of Temple City history. That's exciting.
Scott, since you were such a big part of this, I thought you'd find it...
(Applause).
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Again, thank you to the host families and to the students, and enjoy your last full week here.
So can I share a few embarrassing words?
Sure. As long as they're about you.
Yeah. So yesterday, I had the privilege of hosting or chaperoning this great group of students. Picked them up at the high school around 12:30, I believe, and had them for the afternoon. And I was trying to figure out, well, where could we go that would be kind of neat in the area for lunch? And I was thinking, maybe the boat or something, you know, something, or we were going to go to Old Town Pasadena, a lot of good restaurants. So I said, "Where would you guys like to go?" IHOP? The last place I would think of, right? Everybody's like, "IHOP." But they, it was good, right? Guys, wasn't it a good lunch?
Very good.
Very good. A lot of pancakes on that table, I'll tell you that. Spent the day going shopping in Old Town a little bit. That was interesting. And then ended up at Handel's Ice Cream for dessert. And then we went on a roller coaster ride through Sierra Madre. I had one of the city vehicles, and all of us were in there. We fit very nicely. But I don't know if you guys are familiar with, some of the Sierra Madre streets have a lot of speed bumps. And I didn't realize it was going to be every ten feet. So we went over a couple of them, and I just kind of lost track and missed one of them. And I think we all hit our heads on the top of the car. So that was, that was probably the most fun thing we had all afternoon, probably, right? So anyway, thank you, guys, for putting up with me in the afternoon, and it was a lot of fun, and we look forward to the going away dinner, which is coming up soon, I believe. It's hard to believe, it's been, what, three weeks already or four? Yeah. So anyway, but good group, good group. And I know, I know we probably always say that, but we really do mean it. And I can tell you that being involved with this program for so long, we've seen all kinds of groups come and go. But you guys are pretty special, and, you know, all of us wish you the best of luck, and I'm sure you're going to take back a lot of memories. So thank you again. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item 5B, Red Ribbon Week proclamation. Red Ribbon Week, observed annually from October 23rd through October 31st, promotes drug prevention, education, and a drug-free lifestyle among youth and communities. In honor of the memory of DEA Agent Enrique Kiki Camarena, this observation serves to unite individuals, schools, organizations, and communities in a shared commitment to healthy, drug-free living through participation in prevention, activities, themed events, and outreach efforts that strengthen our collective resolve to stand against substance abuse. I would like to invite the Southland Young Marines Private First Class Maxwell Hadad, Lance Corporal Harley Herrera, Private Ethan Dillon, and Private First Class Leonard Soto to come up to receive the proclamation. (Applause). And council, will you join me in a picture?
Sure.
(Inaudible). Somebody? Oh. Wait. Yeah. In the restroom? Yeah. We'll look at him when he comes in. Tell him to wash his hands. Yeah. Take one out. And then we'll take another. All right. Sounds good. You guys all happy? Smiling? Are you smiling? They're Marines, they can smile. (Laughter). Do we have the instructor, maybe, come on?
No.
You sure?
It's about the kids. It's about the kids. Surge, do you want to be in the picture?
No. Okay. Come on this end. All right. Yeah. Good job, guys.
Thank you. (Applause).
Okay, we move to item 5C, recognition of utility box beautification artists. And Scott, I just have to say, it's a little tour in itself to go around. I hope that our schools take advantage and take the kids on a walking tour of all of them. But please, go ahead.
Sure. You're going to get your exercise in tonight, council. You've got one more opportunity to get up and stretch your feet or your legs. Good evening, Mayor. Honorable councilmembers and members of the community that are here tonight. It's truly a privilege to recognize these talented artists who have transformed our streets into a gallery of public art through the Art on Boxes campaign. This remarkable project is here today because of your foresight, your leadership, and your commitment, city council members. When you approved the Las Tunas Streetscape project, you made a bold choice, not just to invest in infrastructure improvements like landscaping, benches, and LED lighting, but to elevate the cultural life of our community. By dedicating public resources to public art, you've ensured that our downtown would not only function better, but would stand as a welcoming, vibrant, and distinctly Temple City space. So I think the first round of applause tonight belongs to our city council for taking such good leaders.[1488.26][1488.26](Applause). Through this vision, 26 utility boxes along and around Las Tunas Drive have been transformed into canvases. Each one reflects a piece of our identity, whether it's a camilla or a parrot or the camilla festival, the red car, the astronaut Steve Lindsay, or other stories that capture the spirit of Temple City. This vision came to life because of our partnership with 1111 Projects, a nonprofit with deep experience in public art all across Southern California. They reviewed more than 150 artist submissions, coordinated the installation, and built in a youth mentorship program that paired local students with professional artists, ensuring this project was not only about beautifying boxes, but also about inspiring the next generation. We extend our special thanks to Executive Director Aaron Stone and Programs Officer Megan Pinkston and the entire 1111 team for the passion and professionalism they poured into this effort. Their work, guided by the direction and support of the city council, has created something lasting, a streetscape that radiates creativity, community pride, and Temple City's unique identity. And now, the reason why we're here tonight, the artists. Of course, none of this would be possible without the artists themselves. Their creativity and dedication turned ordinary gray boxes into extraordinary landmarks of beauty. Each design adds depth, color, and story to our city's streetscape, reminding us daily of the power of art to connect us to place and to each other. And now, we want to spend some time recognizing each of the artists that have come tonight, and we will show them a picture of the work that they've done, and then the mayor will provide, or the council will provide some certificates. So now, the mayor would like to each thank each artist individually. As your name's called, please come forward, receive your certificate, and shake the hands with the council members, and then pose for a picture. And then, once you have your certificate, if you could stay up here and stay in front of the dais, then we'll take a group picture at the end. So with that, we'll start off with our first artist.
What are we doing? Cindy, you can move it up there for this? You want to hook it? Let's go.
Is this Faye? Faye. Faye Feliciano, in recognition of your creativity and contribution to the beautification of our community through your artwork on the utility box in our city. Your unique vision and talent have transformed the box into a vibrant expression of art, culture, and community pride. Thank you for helping turn our streets into galleries and for inspiring all who pass by. And this is true of all the artists, but I'm only going to read that one. (Laughter). Faye? (Applause). Are we, we'll take a group picture, or how do you want to do it?
Yeah, we can do a group. It's up to you. Okay, group.
Vivian Rodriguez. Vivian? And Sophia Guo, is it Guo? Guo? And she is the student mentee, so she worked with the artists. Pretty cool, right? Megan Tran. LaShawn Ito. Is it LaShawn or LaShawn? Jessica Guo, student mentee. Jason Chang. The artist Omar Mejia. Sarah Evans. Lauren Velve. Lauren, is it Velve?
Valve.
Valve. Thank you. Pablo Azar. Annabelle Wayland. Stephanie Valdevia. 1111 Projects. Megan Pinkston. And Megan is the 1111 Projects Programs Officer. You do it all. Aaron Stone.
Oh, that's also a lovely person.
Jason Chang. Well, that's, he's two. Let's give them a big hand. You know, I won't say where I started looking at them, but I thought the first one was my favorite, and then I got to the second one, and I thought, well, no, that's my favorite. And then, when I got to the end, I realized that they're all my favorites. So congratulations.
(Applause).
Who's that? What's peeking behind you? Okay.
(Inaudible).
You're now part of Temple City history. That's exciting. I think there were so many thematic choices, but you did not let that limit you. In fact, we were so pleased with the imagination and creativity you put in. Just thank you for the love for, I mean, we really, really enjoyed looking at them, and now that they've come to life, it's, we're getting a lot of positive comments about them throughout the community. So again, thank you for your participation, and thank you for sharing your art with us.
Thank you. Thank you. Of course.
So I live close to Encinita, and I just want to say on Encinita, there are three boxes with three different arts on the same side. So when I walk with my kids, they're always looking at it and commenting at how beautiful they are. So I love how it just happened to cluster right there, so I got to brag about it. But it's all your great work and creativity and imagination to really spice up our downtown along with other things that we're doing. So it's really coming together, and what you've done is a very important piece of the puzzle that we're trying to do with our downtown. So thank you.
Tom?
Well, I work in Pasadena, and they do have boxes printed there, painted there as well. And the mayor's correct, ours are much better. I think, so, good job. Thank you very much for what you guys have done.
Okay, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear those public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? How about you, Charles? Come on up.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, Charles Trevino with Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. Just want to say we have, we have plenty of water in storage. We have enough water to meet any drought that might come up in the following year. We have over 200,000 acre feet of water in storage. One acre feet of water is 325,000 gallons. So the math is amazing on how much water we've been able to purchase. The issue with the Colorado River still remains up in the air in terms of how that will be a portion between the states. But we feel confident that it'll get resolved in the next year or so. But we're in good shape as far as water's concerned. We've been able to purchase a lot of water, and we will continue to purchase water and make it available and store it. And we're aggressively pursuing also the situation with groundwater and working on that. So we feel very confident about the fact that we will be okay.
Charles, I just have a question.
Yeah.
And I've been meaning to ask this. We should still be conserving water, though.
Yes.
Correct? I think everybody's been in that mindset for so long of conserving water that I don't want to lose that.
Absolutely. And I think a caveat would be that water is going to become more expensive. Metropolitan is looking at a rate increase in their water. Water is becoming more scarce with global warming. So those things are a reality, and we should continue to be vigilant and continue to conserve. So thank you for that.
Okay.
For that reminder.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Nope. We move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been approved. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. Item, I want to make sure. Item eight, public hearing, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. And we have an update from our city manager, Brian Cook.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. We are done with the latest street resurfacing project. We'll do a few more streets with a little bit of contingency funds we have left, but striping and everything else is done. We'll be doing some quality control checks with our inspectors. If anybody has any issues with any of the street repaving that we've done in your neighborhood, we will come out, we'll fix what's been out there. But thank you to TransTech. Thank you to our contractor Onyx Paving has done an excellent job, again, throughout the city. I will continue what we've said before, is that paving is expensive. Our funding is extremely limited and will be challenged in future years, but we will continue to do what we can with the funding that we have. So I know it's frustrating for some members of the public that their street hasn't been repaved in quite a while. We are challenged, but we will continue to move forward as best we can with the resources that we have. And lastly, I know Mayor Protem Man will bring it up, but thank you to World Journal, our great partner, for another great autumn festival as well. Little break between big events for a while, so staff can rest a little bit, get geared up for our winter activities. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have an update from our city attorney?
Just a brief one. Case came out yesterday that I thought was worth talking about for just a moment. Nights like tonight, the members of the public here are incredibly well behaved, and certainly it's a joyful night. The city of Berkeley has some situations that aren't quite so joyful, and so they've had to rely on a new provision of the Brown Act that we discussed last year around this time that allows the meeting room to be cleared, the press to stay in the room, the meeting to continue to be broadcast. It's only when there are sort of willful interruptions and you can't keep order. The city of Berkeley decided that the crowd that they had on three separate occasions was such that they couldn't keep order in the room, and so they used the Brown Act provision and moved to a different room where they had set up cameras to broadcast. They were sued on that, saying that they had done it improperly, and the appeals court agreed that at the very least, and Councilman Chavez knows this one, they couldn't get rid of the case on demur, which means at the very start of the case, they couldn't just knock it right out. They had to develop the facts of why they believed that order couldn't be restored, why they believed that the room couldn't be cleared, because the Brown Act provision is pretty clear that you have to try to clear the room, and you can't just move to a different room. The court also said, and this is probably the best thing for us, that there, the Brown Act also has emergency, a language for emergency circumstances that allows the council or another body to leave the room, but that the city of Berkeley didn't use that as their trigger. They used the clear the room language as their trigger. So it's just a reminder to us that courts will be construing the Brown Act very strictly against us, and we need to follow the provisions to the letter, because what Berkeley did certainly seemed to many of us to make sense, but the court said no. When it comes to public meetings, we follow the letter of the law. Just a little update for you, not, nothing that we have to do, just a good reminder. Thanks much.
Thank you, Greg. Okay. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings, are there any?
Mayor, yes.
Yes. William?
So Councilmember Chavez and I would like to report out on the school district and city standing committee meeting that was held on September 25th. There was a lot of items on the agenda, and I just want to thank our city manager, Brian Cook, as well as Mr. Jose Amaya for providing updates regarding the e-bike safety issues that we have been working closely with our district partners on. I think all of us have observed the increasing use of e-bikes throughout the city, especially amongst our youth. So our focus is really on education, getting the word out. We've observed a lot of unsafe practices, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about differences between e-bikes, scooters, and, you know, which ones require a license, which ones don't. So I think our staff, especially Mr. Amaya, has really taken the lead in working with district staff and helping push that education effort out. So he was, he was there and offered a lot of insight to that matter. We, our city manager also provided an update regarding the future of our city infrastructure and program costs. So that was something that I know he has been messaging to a lot of our community organizations and groups, and so our partners at the district have probably heard of it already, but we had a chance to formally present what those challenges are in this meeting setting. And by the way, Tom, if there's anything, please just jump right in. I'll just cover maybe the rest of the agenda. And then, on the district side, they, there were, again, traffic concerns and safety issues brought up near Temple City High School. However, I am proud to say that our city engineer and city staff have been diligently working on many of those issues. We are, of course, place a very high value and priority on pedestrian safety, especially those of our, of our kids. So that's, that's a continuing partnership. Dr. Kuna provided an update on the sports complex moving forward. I believe he mentioned that in November, there will be a state of the schools.
Yeah, they're going to combine the state of the schools address with sort of a grand opening of the new complex. Yeah. I think it was November 6?
November 6.
November 6.
Yeah, November 6.
Okay. Thank you. And the district also discussed some potential work that we can help them out with along Camino Real. So I know our, our engineers are also looking at that, or, and our planners. So, and of course, the district themselves also mentioned and discussed the potential for a school bond that may come next year. As, you know, with all the work that we've seen the district undertake, especially with the sports complex, it's, it's, if we look back at to, as to when measure, the Measure S bond was, was passed, that was more than
2012.
Twelve?
Ten years.
Twelve, yeah, twelve, thirteen years ago. So it's, it's been quite a while, but they've, you see the actual product of where that investment went into, into the district. And, you know, being a parent now, I see what the district means when they talk about infrastructure needs looking in the future. So that was a good fruitful discussion to be able to hear the district's perspective on that.
William, is there quite a bit of deferred maintenance still on the schools?
Yeah, I think the superintendent mentioned, you know, like one example is Oak Aveau, Oak Intermediate. There hasn't been any work done on that since probably when it was built. Yeah, so, and having been there, you can kind of see what they mean. And so there's not really a revenue stream that the district gets that's dedicated to these large-scale capital improvement-type costs, which I think a lot of agencies are facing.
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Chavez?
No, I just want to remind everyone, Jerry, you post the meeting on your website, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you want to view the meeting, I know Jerry is there to record it, and it's posted on his website, templecityphotos.com, correct?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you can actually see the meeting as well. Good summary. Good meeting, as always, and we've already, we've set another meeting, I believe, in January or December? Can't remember now.
January.
I think it's in January, after they come back from the holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah. So more, more to follow on that. And if anybody also from the council has any items that they want, like us to put on the agenda, let us know, and we'll add that ahead of time so that we can get that on the discussion as well.
Did you happen to ask Tom about the students from China, if that program was still in place? You were going to
Ask who?
The school board.
About this
The program.
Oh. No, I didn't. In fact, I apologize. We'll have to find out.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it is, to be honest with you. I know
I know it's at the elementary schools.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know. Does anybody, are you familiar with that program at all? Okay, yeah, we'll have to follow up on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else? Okay. We move to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Chavez?
I don't think they really have anything, although it seems like a long time since I've been here. I missed the last meeting, or we missed the last meeting.
We've been active, just not here.
Out of town, yeah, we've been doing a lot of stuff. But no, of course, the Autumn Festival was, was a great success, I believe, and then, of course, the Fall Festival with the car show was another success. Our Parks and Rec, got a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department. They've been very busy, but they've done a fantastic job, as our city manager mentioned. They've been doing, I think they're over with, but they were doing movies in the park during the last few weeks as well. So they, they're, they're a busy, busy group. And, and so, yeah, big, big shout out to the Parks and Rec Department for always doing a great job, and they do deserve a rest. But not very long, because we're going to start again in about another month with a lot of our holiday stuff, so.
Would you like to share a little bit about the JPIA educational forum? Because many of our staff went, and Brian?
So, so actually, Mayor Sternquist and I did attend the Risk Management Conference in Monterey a few weeks ago, which is sort of the nationwide risk management groups to get together, one of which is the California JPI, which we are a member of. And so that was, that was very good. They had a lot of good speakers, good, good topics, mostly focusing, of course, on risk management and how we can make things better and make things safer in our city. And then last week, we were, a few of us down in Carlsbad for the California JPIA conference, which again is always a success. We drew, I think, the most people we ever have, over 500 people attended. And again, more subjects on risk management, how to keep our city safe, and was, like I said, well, well-received. We'll get a breakdown on it at our next executive committee meeting, but overall, it seemed like a very good, good program. People had a good time, so.
Okay. Councilmember Chen?
Yes, I want to congratulate two Temple City High School students for making to the Rose Court finalist, and I believe will, and also one of them, Olivia DePaula, made it to the final court. So that's a
Is it Olivia or Olivia? I think it's
Livia.
Livia. It's Livia, yeah. She was actually one of our student ambassadors last year as well. She went to Australia, yeah.
And she's one on the Temple City Court, Miss Temple City Court this year as well. So very happy moment for Temple City to have one of our own on, on that, on that stage.
Jerry, what's the day she's going to be announced as the Rose Queen?
Monday, but I don't know for sure.
This coming Monday?
Yeah.
Well, you have some inside information on that or something, or what?
I know quite a few people went to, from the school district
Yeah.
To see them, what was it called? The, I don't want to say elimination, but to see the final court.
Well, it's where they select the Royal Court.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that in itself is a pretty big honor.
Yes. So we are going to have the, what is her name?
Or the finalists.
The finalists, and come to a council member, and we'll recognize her also. I mean, there were 700 girls, so to have two from Temple City represent us is great. Okay, anything else?
No.
Councilmember Yu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have anything exciting like all of you've been talking about, but I want to, as an infrastructure guy, I want to go back to infrastructure. I want to echo what city manager has said about pavement. I think I've, I actually did look at some of the repavement job recently, and they're actually done very, very well, so congratulations to state snap. But I want to, again, sounds like a broken record here, I'm repeating this message over and over again. I mean, most agencies, just like what Mayor Protem just mentioned, really don't have in their current revenue structure, a way to actually, to keep up the infrastructure of the agency. In our case, the biggest asset for us is roads. So, and, and pavement condition is part and parcel of our quality of life. So it's really the job of this council to look to the future, to see how we can keep up our pavement. So just wanted to put a plug in for that.
Well, I think the bottom line is we need some money, right?
Absolutely.
So
Thank you.
Anyway. All right. Mayor Protem Man?
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist. Yeah, quite, quite an eventful couple of weeks. I, and as our city manager correctly predicted, I do want to echo and give a shout out to not just our Parks and Recs department, but our partners at World Journal for a successful High Autumn Festival. What was, what was better about this year was that the weather wasn't as hot, so I think we got more people to come out earlier than usual. I think some of our previous events, you know, when we started at 2:00 PM, it would be 95 to 100 degrees, and understandably, not everyone wants to be outside under those conditions. So, so that, that was, that was great. We really thank them for, for that partnership. Also, speaking of the High Autumn Festival, Councilmember Yu and I had an opportunity to visit our supervisor of the 5th District, Catherine Berger, who generously presented a certificate for us in recognition and appreciation of our, our hosting of the High Autumn Festival. And so I brought it back for, for council, and if, Mayor, if you're okay with my suggestions that perhaps the five of us get a picture with this, and we can send it back to the supervisor?
Sure, let's do that now. Sure, let's do that now.
Sure, yeah. Why not? And just one last thing. I missed the...I know we did an employee appreciation event. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but I do want to take the moment to say that I absolutely do appreciate what our city staff and everyone does on a day-to-day basis. You know, being a public servant myself on the county side, I truly appreciate and understand what it means to be in public service. So, thank you to all city staff. You guys deserve it.
That's it. With the mention of the city employee appreciation, we will be doing that in December again, will we not, for years of service or...
Yeah, that'll be the Years of Service recognition.
Okay. Will you have Liz contact me so we could plan that soon?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. I just want to mention that I went to USC Hospital. I keep wanting to call it Methodist, but it's USC Arcadia Hospital. Their crystal ball...
Kek, I think.
They don't even put kek in their title, but it is part of...
When they sent me email, they said...
Did they put kek? And it was a lovely event, but I think the thing that was most important is that it is our community hospital. It's the hospital that's closest to us, and it's probably the hospital that most of our residents in Temple City would go to if there is an emergency. So it was nice to see such a great turnout. They raised over $400,000 to go...this year, the money was to go to improve nursing education. So that was something I think that was quite important to the honoree. I can't think of his name right off the top of my head, but he was honored for his diligence and contributions. He's a doctor to the hospital nursing staff and their employees. So it was nice to see him being honored. And Catherine Barger invited me to represent the city of Temple City, and it was really nice. I saw William's wife there with her work. And so many community members from local cities that have their residents use USC Hospital. So, it's nice to know that they are a state of...what is the word I'm using? A state-of-the-art city hospital for all the cities that they serve. So, it was a really nice event, and I just want to...
Where was the event?
It was at the Langham this year.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it was very nice, a beautiful setting.
How much did that cost to go?
I don't know, I didn't pay for it. The supervisor purchased a table and then invited different mayors from...
I didn't get invited to that last year. Man, I'm telling you.
I don't know.
My grandson was born there three months ago.
Yeah, so...
And remember when I was in the hospital last year, and I was mayor, and they found out I was mayor, I was treated like royalty there, so that was pretty cool, too.
Well, I was there...
Well, I missed out, you have told them when I had my surgery.
I know. I was there three years ago in ER, and I was treated just like everyone else, but I have to tell you, it was...
You got to tell them who you are.
It was the, in a scary situation, it was the best place I could have been at the time, and I had an excellent doctor. I'll never forget his name. His name was Dr. Klein, and he was a young doctor, but they have some really great doctors there, and the nurses were phenomenal. So I can't say enough about that hospital. So I think we need to continue to support them. And I just want to share that at the Autumn Moon Festival, we had a car show also that was really well-attended. I think we had, Tom, I think we had more cars this time than we've had in the past.
You know, there were a lot of cars. I don't know exactly the count. Jerry, you remember how many? There were the whole part of Golden West from Las Tunas to, what's the next street up here?
Woodruff.
Woodruff was pretty fast.
And the nice thing was is that two of the winners, it was the first time they had entered into the Temple City Car Show. So it was nice to have some new people saying, oh my goodness, it was the first time I've entered, and I'm so thrilled to have been a winner. So, please pass that on to Adam. It was a great event. And I think that's it. Do we have any other public comments from anyone? Okay, then we are adjourned.